Good evening, everyone. We will call the November 19, 2012 City Council Meeting to Order. First order of business is the roll call. Charlene?
Sasso.
Here.
Nordstrom.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Clayton.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Doyle.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Laurenti.
Here.
We have Quorum.
The next order of business is the invocation and Pastor Dave from Fountain Springs Wesleyan Church. Everyone, please rise.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this incredible day that you've given us. It's a blessing. It's a privilege. Lord, I pray right now in the moments of this meeting that you will equip everyone in leadership with wisdom that comes from you. Lord, I pray that you'll give everyone in leadership discernment. Lord, empower us to be a city that cares about the people who don't have what they need. And, Lord, may we be a city that just glorifies you in everything you've done. But I pray for the mayor that you'll give him the wisdom to lead as you want him to. But, Lord, we just surrender this city to you and ask that you do what is great for you and what honors you the most. This meeting, we hand over to you and ask that you glorify yourself with it. We pray these things, God, because we love you. And you are the one true God, so we pray this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the righteous fans. Thank you, Pastor Dave. The next order of business is adoption of the agenda. Do we have any additions or changes to tonight's agenda? Any additions or changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Peterson, second by Nordstrom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next order of business is Veteran of the Month, and if Tina Schur could join us down front along with Ward Five Alderman. Partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we are pleased to present the November 2012 Veteran of the Month recognition to Tina Schur. Tina was born in Rupert, Idaho, and attended Minaco High School where she graduated in 1982. After graduation, she enlisted in the U.S. Air Force as an administrative specialist until 1987, when she cross-trained as a legal services specialist. She served in the Air Force from 1982 to 92. During her enlistments, she was stationed at Calker Air Station, Third German Air Force Headquarters, Peterson Air Force Base, Sandstrom Air Force Base in Greenland, Andrews Air Force Base in DC, Mountain Home Air Force Base in Idaho, and...
Logis Field.
Thank you. Logis Field Air Force Base in Portugal. She has received numerous military awards and decorations, including the War Campaign Medal for her support of Desert Shield and Storm from 90 to 92. She has been married to Officer Ryan Schur of the Rapid City Police Department for 19 years and they have two children. She worked as a contract employee at Ellsworth Air Force Base for two years in family advocacy. And during that time, she and Ryan began their own security company, which they've operated together for 15 years. She continues to be involved with the military and has earned the 28th Bomb Wing Civilian Category One of the Year, the 28th Bomb Wing MDG Civilian Category One of the Year, as well as numerous quarterly awards. This past January, she began working with Black Hills Veterans Healthcare System, where she continues to serve our veterans at the Rapid City VA Clinic. Having served her country with pride, honor, and integrity, she's a true patriot, and she's most deserving of Veteran of the Month. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thanks.
And now is the time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placing on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present, and there are three minutes each allotted for public comment. And we'll first go to Bonnie Redden. Good evening, Bonnie.
Hello, all. My name is Bonnie Redden, and I live in Ward Four. I'm aware that none of you can answer questions or any of the hoopla that goes on with this. But I've had several conversations with people about this in the last month or so, so I have a straight-up question. It is true, if it is true, of the matter of Sam's being sued by Mettinger, that the city insurance will pay for his defense. This needs a whole lot of discussion. Questions you need to ask and inform the public are, if he, Mettinger, is suing Sam personally and not the city, in their opinion, Sam should be responsible, not the taxpayer paid for insurance. Also, what is an executive order, and who signed it? Thank you.
We'll now go to Patty Martenson under general public comment. Patty? Patty? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. My name is Patty Martenson. I'm board president of the Black Hills Center for Equality. World AIDS Day is held on December 1st of each year, and is an opportunity for people worldwide to unite in the fight against HIV and AIDS, show your support for people living with HIV, and commemorate people who have died. World AIDS Day was the first ever Global Health Day, and the first one was held in 1988. In South Dakota, over 400 people are currently living with HIV and AIDS, with 21 new infections being reported in 2011. In Pennington County, 147 individuals have been diagnosed with HIV and AIDS since 1985, and it is estimated that 104 individuals are living with HIV and AIDS in western South Dakota. We and many others seek to ensure that every positive person is aware of their status, they are linked to quality medical care, and are provided with the support they need to live a long and healthy life. Together, we can help reach the World Health Organization's goal of zero new infections in our lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. We do not have any additional speaker request forms for general public comment. Did I miss anyone? We are now on items 2 through 42. And we have, we have a motion to open public comment.
So moved.
Motion by Doyle, second by Clayton to open public comment on 2 through 42. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do have two speaker request forms. If there's anyone else that would like to speak on items 2 through 42, if you could please fill out a speaker request form over at the press table, and then you can hand it to Charlene to my right. We'll first go to Ethan Hudson on item 29. Item 29.
Ethan Hudson, 1917 Reddell Drive. Good evening. Many of you I've spoken to many times on this issue. I promise I'll be a little bit more expedient than I was last time, so I don't have to get chewed off the stage. I just want to give a quick thanks to John Lesz for providing such a thorough and informative traffic report about the traffic on 19... or, excuse me, on Reddell Drive. The report verifies the concerns that we've brought to the Public Works Committee and to the council, that the majority of traffic is speeding down Reddell Drive. Ninety percent of the traffic that goes down that street is going over the posted speed limit, that the street does have high pedestrian traffic, and that there's no safe pedestrian pathway to get from one end of Reddell Drive down to Canyon Lake Drive. The report indicates the prevailing speed is nearly 30 miles an hour, and that 15% of all vehicles going down the street are going between 50 and 100% greater than the posted speed limit. As I indicated before, there is high pedestrian traffic. The one day that pedestrians were counted, there was approximately 30. Keep in mind, that was in October. It was a nice day, but the days are a little bit shorter in the summer. You could certainly see higher pedestrian traffic. As John indicates in his report, you can't actually walk down Reddell Drive without committing a petty offense, because there's no sidewalk. I'll make the same request to the council that I made at the Public Works Committee. It's been nearly a year since I brought my concerns to Mrs. Peterson and Mr. Sasso, and that the issue come to a vote. All the information that needs to be presented was presented in Mr. Lesz's report. And just to use the same analogy that Mr. Wright did last meeting when I was before you guys, let's not kick the can down the street. Let's come to a resolution. Thanks for your time. And have a happy Thanksgiving, too.
Thank you, Ethan. We'll now go to Wayne Shotwell, also on item 29. Wayne?
Wayne Shotwell, 1906 Reddell Drive. Again, I've been here before. First of all, on the matter of the speed, I'm glad you're addressing that finally. The one thing I would like to suggest is, it's not only a problem that's on Reddell. It starts higher up. You can go as high as back up to 44th, Hillsview, and Raider Road there. That's a 25 mile an hour speed zone. Probably wouldn't hurt to reduce that area earlier down to a 20. Also, it probably would not hurt that at the corner of Hillsview and West St. Patrick, to change that yield sign to a stop sign. As early as three weeks ago, there was a student that came from Stevens. Yield signs, you don't have to stop. He continued, he lost control. He actually ended up in my yard. So, yeah, there is a problem with speed. As far as the sidewalks, that's a little bit of a thorn in my side. I'm not saying it's not going to work, but I think the way that I'm told that I have to put them in, and I have to pay it for a problem that theoretically was caused years ago because of the building of Stevens and that was not addressed at that time for the speed. This report shows a 16-foot road and 1,700 cars per day. That is a problem. But I don't see, I should have to pay to help resolve a problem that was caused by somebody else. And I guess what I also would like to do at this time is, if you decide to go ahead with the sidewalks, I don't know if this is the right place for not to ask for it, but I would like a couple of variances. The sidewalks leading to my property, which dead ends at West St. Patrick for what you want, is all four-foot. I would like you to reduce mine from the five-foot requested to the four-foot. I also have an asphalt driveway that I would like you to consider as a hard surface for walking. This would reduce the amount that would come out of my pocket to do this. And starting next year, as we all know, this extra money out of your pocket is going to be tough, because the federal government does not do anything about the Bush tax era. Average middle class is going to pay somewhere between $2,000 and $3,600 extra a year, which could be an extra $200 to $300 out of my pocket. Plus, if I have to do the full work that you're looking at at $6,000 over 60 months out of my taxes, my escrow will be another $100. You're looking at $400 a month out of my pocket in these economic times. So I guess I'm just asking for some help here somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. We do not have any additional speaker request forms for 2 through 42. Did I miss anyone? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close public comment? Motion by Clayton and a second by Wright to close public comment on 2 through 42. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on items 2 through 42, consent items. If anyone would like to remove any item, go to Jerry Wright.
29.
29. Bonnie Peterson.
Number 11.
Number 11. Also, number 12. We have 11, 12, and 29. Any additional items? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the balance of consent?
So moved.
We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Peterson to approve items 2 through 42, with the exceptions 11, 12, and 29. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 11. And Chad Lewis, can you read this into the record for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11 is a request by Charles Desmond, General Partnership Doing Business as Efritz Hookah Lounge, from 725 St. Joseph Street, for a retail on-off sale license, wine license. Can I move approval?
This is to set for hearing.
Oh, it's set for hearing, I'm sorry.
This is a motion to set for hearing.
Okay. Move to set for hearing, then.
Okay. And we have a second by Doyle. And we'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
Hi, I have a question for Chief Alender, please. Chief, I know we're just setting this for hearing, but are we going to have a good update on this case when they come on December 3rd?
Yes.
I just want to make sure it doesn't slip by you, because I know there were some big concerns on that location.
No. No, I'm prepared to tell you all you can stand to hear about it.
Okay.
On December 3rd.
Okay. Great. I look forward to it, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to set for hearing for December 3. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12. Jerry Wright.
Item 12 is to confirm the appointments of Lori Leetson, Susan Martley, Sunny Stevens, James Winger, Fred Weissel, Michael Sanborn, and Lawrence Kostineski to the Stormwater Drainage Utility Task Force, and make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Wright and a second by Laurenti. I would, I would like the, if the council is willing, I would like to add an additional appointment of Dick Towne from Mead Street to the list of appointees.
I'll amend my motion to that effect.
Second.
Is it okay with the seconder? Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Item, item number 29. Jerry Wright.
Item 29 is to acknowledge the Reddell Traffic Study Report. And I make a motion to do that, and if I may, I'll throw to comment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Wright and a second by Laurenti to acknowledge the report. Jerry, you have the floor.
What I would like to see this, done on this, is that the, it goes back to Public Works with council approval and direction, that we develop a project to install the calming portions of Reddell, and also to install the sidewalk on the east side of Reddell assessed to the owners. And that would be only on the Reddell side, on the east side.
Okay. Everyone understands the motion? The motion is to send this back to Public Works?
And they would, with the direction that they would put together a project to do what I've stated. Traffic calming, and also the sidewalk on the east side, which would be paid for by the owners.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Does everyone understand the motion? Chad, you'd like clarification?
Please.
Jerry, would you clarify?
Surely. I'm not going to specify exactly what the traffic calming would be. That would be done by the traffic engineer. The sidewalk, I do believe that a continuous length of sidewalk is needed to get pedestrians through that neighborhood, especially from the apartment complex. And also, there is a leg of sidewalk on the north side of St. Pat to Canyon Lake Drive. It would give an adequate sidewalk system to get pedestrians off the street and onto a paved sidewalk, fully realizing that the west side, we could order in, but there's some terrain features, hillsides, and so forth, and I'm not sure we'd gain it. I think we'd probably be incurring some expense that may not be warranted or necessary. So I support just the sidewalk on the east side.
Ron?
Thank you. Just, just wanted to get some clarification from Terry Walterstorff. I believe that, a couple of questions that came up, one of which is, for that area, I do believe we would be looking at a four-foot sidewalk. Would that be acceptable?
Yeah, I want to double-check our infrastructure design criteria manual, but I believe on local streets like that, we can go down to four-foot sidewalk if they're property-lined sidewalks, which essentially this would be. It's going to be curbside, but it's basically property line, too. And we can certainly look into the issue on utilizing the driveway as part of the walking surface, as long as it meets the ADA standards.
That was the only other piece that I had, so thank you for answering both of those.
Thank you, Ron. And we'll go to Bonnie Peterson. Bonnie?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Sasso. That's basically what I wanted to reinforce with Mr. Walterstorff, to work with citizens that are going to be having to bear the brunt of this. And also, it was pointed out that I think on Radar Road, Hillsview, you know, when they're coming down the hill, about the speed there, and I don't know when John did his study, if he's done one recently in that area. I know I've gotten a speeding ticket there myself, and I, I'm not one to do that, so it's, the living's high and good up there. You just want to go fast for some reason. And, and also, investigating the possibility of a stop sign there instead of the yield sign that was mentioned, because it's easy to speed up there.
We can certainly take a look at the yield versus stop sign.
Okay. Thank you.
And we'll go to Steve Laurenti. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. And Terry, if you don't mind, let's continue that questioning. I had a couple of questions. One is, the timeframe that is determined, is that set in stone as far as how long the citizens have to pay this back through their property taxes? Is that set in stone, or do we have some leeway there?
Well, kind of two parts to that question. If the council approves this tonight, the staff will bring forward the formal paperwork, the formal notice that will specify all the properties, and it'll give the timeline to get it constructed. I think on the ones we did earlier this year on Canyon Lake Drive, we gave them till, I think it was July 1st. Those that don't get constructed, we'll do them as a city project. They get assessed to the property over a five-year period by state statute.
My last question goes to, I guess, as I read this report, and the part I'm struggling with, and I understand there may be some terrain issues with the west side, but it seems kind of, I don't want to say counterproductive, but I'm imagining the people on the west side of the street are going to be jumping for joy, and the people on the east side are wondering, what the heck? So, and I'm just wondering why we would require just one side of a street to do such a thing and not require the entire residents on the street.
My recollection up there on this section of Reddell is there are some retaining walls and some, there are just some site topography problems that, it wasn't very conducive to do it on that side.
And we'll go to Ron Sasso. Ron?
Just, just to clarify, the retaining walls are pretty significant, actually, about as high as here, so, and there are some sidewalks on the west side, but a couple of properties, I think the estimate, there are some estimations that could be as much as $30,000 to install a sidewalk on some of those properties, which really would be outrageous. So that's, that's why we're kind of stuck looking at just that east side, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. If I can clarify my understanding of the motion, Jerry, this, this is not ordering in the sidewalks tonight. This is to put together a project and a plan for sidewalks at homeowner expense and traffic calming at city expense, and to bring forward an update at the next Public Works meeting. It might need a little bit more time. Terry?
I would say as soon as possible, so they can be done by next spring, but I'd say end of December.
So we'll shoot for the second Public Works meeting in December? Does anybody know the date on that? Fine. 12? The 12? For the second? Second Public? It'll be on the 26th. Okay. Everyone understands the motion?
Oh.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on non-consent items, 43 through 137. Do we have a motion to open public comment?
So moved.
Motion by Clayton, second by Sasso. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have one speaker request form, and this is on item 140. I'm sorry, that will be on the next section. So we're on 140. Guess we don't have any public comment on 43 through 137. Do we have a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Nordstrom?
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we'll go to Chad Lewis for item number 43.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 43 is a Second Amendment, Second Reading of Ordinance 5874, in order to require the finance officer to report estimated federal funding to the common council by amending sections 2.40, .080 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Doyle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 44.
Item 44 is a Second Reading of Ordinance 5875, in order to clarify the boundaries of the bid improvement district of number one by amending section 3.24, .020 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 45.
Item 4 is a Second Reading of Ordinance 5876, in order to codify the business improvement district number one, boards' composition, regulations, and powers by adding sections 3.24, .035, and .3.24, .036 to chapter 3.24 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 46.
Item 46 is a Second Reading, Ordinance number 5877, in order to clarify the occupation tax levying on hotel rooms in business improvement district number one by amending section 3.24, .040 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Motion by Lewis, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number 47 is first reading of ordinance number 5878, in ordinance to expand the definition of hazardous trees on private property by amending section 12.32.100 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Sasso, and we'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. I saw Lon in the audience. If I can ask him a question, please. Thank you, Lon. I was observing through example of Memorial Park, some of the trees that we, that we fell in that area, and also over in Founder's Park. There's several trees that are very large in diameter, but they're heavily decayed on the inside. Are you able to do any monitoring of such trees, like what this ordinance is trying to address?
Lon Van Dusen, acting interim parks and recreation director for the city. We are inspecting those trees in our park system. We have done a full inventory of all our parks and of all the trees within the parks. We have identified any hazardous trees in our parks, and as such, we schedule removal of those trees when resources are available to do that. Yes, sir.
Lon, one more question if I may, is that this will also cover residential areas. Will you be able to do inspections on those as well? I'm thinking like a core sample or something like that.
That is a, an option to the process of inspecting trees. To my knowledge, we haven't done that particular procedure on determining whether or not a tree is, is hazardous at this point.
Have you, or have, have we got a definition for hazardous? What a hazardous tree is?
I believe in the ordinance, it outlines the, the definition of a hazard tree.
I know, but I was just kind of curious about, because of these examples that I've seen is that, that they're, the hazardous trees that I've been observing are basically hollow on the inside. So I was just wondering if we had a way of determining that they are hazardous.
As you mentioned earlier, I believe that one of the techniques for determining if a tree is hollow is by the use of an increment bore, and at this point, we haven't incorporated that particular type of test on all of our trees.
Thank you, Lon. I'll yield the floor.
Thank you.
And we'll go to Bonnie Peterson. Bonnie?
Hi, I, Lon, I'm going to continue. We'll have another question for Lon, is that okay? You said that you cut down hazardous trees when resources are available. Does that mean we have a backlog of trees that need to be cut down because we don't have resources available?
That is true, yes.
Is there, could you bring that list of trees, or ask the new director when he comes to bring that forward? With some kind of priority of, you know, if some are more dangerous than others?
We certainly can do that, yes.
Could we ask that for, at the, what, end of December, that December 26? Meeting, to bring that forward?
Yes.
Okay, because I just don't like the sound of that, that we have potentially hazardous trees that are not being dealt with because of lack of funding, so I just think we need to try to wrap our arms around that. Thank you.
Be glad to do that. Yes, thank you.
And we'll go to Ron Sasso. Ron?
Just, I guess, a couple, couple things just to clarify. I know with this ordinance, one of the things that, there are people who've dealt with trees falling into their yard. Somebody on West Main had a couple branches that took down her power lines, and some of the criteria looking at the trees, and that was one of the things that Gary Garner, Urban Forester, which I love that title, the whole name, it sounds like a superhero or something, but, but anyway, the, the, that, like for instance, that tree, though, did not fall into that criteria of being dead or diseased, however, had very, had visible signs of decay, lightning strikes and so forth. And so this is designed to basically further clarify the ordinance, and to allow, you know, trees or limbs of that, that nature to be removed, rather than having us dealing with this post a tragedy of a tree falling into somebody's living room, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. And we'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it might be just because I was with a constituent that was teething at 3 o'clock this morning, but is it perhaps, are we just basically giving the city the right to, I mean legally, tell someone they got to do something with their tree? Is that pretty much the gist of this ordinance? I mean, that's just the whole point behind it right now, to expand the definition of whatever dangerous tree is?
I believe that the purpose is to expand that definition, so it gives us some more flexibility to request removal of a tree.
Thank you. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Any further discussion? We have a motion for approval of first reading. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And Lon, you'll bring a, an update regarding the trees that are hazardous, that are waiting to be cut down.
Certainly will.
To the December 26 Public Works meeting. Okay.
Most-wanted list.
All right. We'll talk about it later.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Item number 48, Chad.
Item number 48, the first reading of ordinance 5879, in ordinance to establish competitive bidding process for the off, sale of off-sale packaged liquor licenses by amending section 5.12.030 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Roberts for approval, and we'll go to Pauline Sumption, our finance officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to point out that the reason that I asked for this ordinance to be drafted, quite honestly, it's a fairness issue. We had three licenses out there, and when somebody found out that we had the licenses, they came in and snagged them all. And so it was one of those, that what happens if there's other people out there that are not aware of that? It also comes down to the mom and pops versus the, the chain stores. That's why we kept the amount low. But quite honestly, I just, you feel bad when, when basically one company, technically there are three separate ones, but one owner comes in, takes everything that we have, and there's no opportunity for anybody else. And we had inquiries from other people, but it's, at that time, it was whoever got the paperwork in first. And so this would alleviate that and, and make it a little more competitive for, for all of those business owners. So, thank you.
Pauline, any further comments on this? Seeing none, the motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 49, Chad.
Item 49 is the first reading of ordinance 5880, in ordinance to allow removal of a partially consumed bottle of wine from the premises of certain alcoholic beverage licenses by amending section 5.12.080 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Motion by Lewis and a second by Nordstrom? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye? Opposed, motion carries. Item number 50, Jerry Wright.
Request by Dream Design International Incorporated for preliminary subdivision plan for property generally described as being located at the current southern terminus of Vine Cliff Drive. I yield the floor.
Do we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion by Lewis and a second by Peterson to approve with stipulations. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 51, Jerry?
Request by FMLC Incorporated for preliminary subdivision plan for property generally described as being located on the south side of East Mall Drive between East North Street and Dias Avenue. I'll make the motion to approve with stipulations.
Second.
Motion by Wright and a second by Lorenti to approve with stipulations. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 52, Chad.
Item number 52 is the Compass Committee Updates. Kellen Kelly and Peter Wernick, if you could step forward, gentlemen?
Good evening. I'm Kellen Kelly, chief auditor with the Compass Independent Audit Program. You have before you a brief quarterly report to the city council that we prepared and presented to the audit committee this afternoon. We are under a legal requirement under Rapid City Municipal Code 2.95.030H to submit to you a report every quarter outlining the current status of all pending audits and the status or progress made on any implementation of the recommendations that we make. The first section of the report is basically a rehash of the audit program that you all approved on August the 20th, giving us the ability to conduct two audits during the fiscal year 2012. This section is just simply a, again, a reiteration of the topics that you approved, one on the citywide cash handling and one on the city's current charge account program. The current status as of September 30th, 2012, is that we had no audits pending at that time. We do, however, have one audit in progress right now. It is the citywide cash handling audit, which I'll discuss in just a second. We have a second audit that we will begin in mid-December. That audit will focus on the city's charge account program as you approved in August. Right now, we are currently in the planning phase, which is the first of three audit phases for our cash handling audit. What we've done to date is basically review all the general background information that we have been collecting from city agencies. This relates to departmental accounts, funds, policies, procedures, and records. We've also been gathering internal control criteria from professional auditing and accounting organizations that produce those kind of criteria. Where we stand with the audit is that we will develop the remaining steps in our audit program this week and begin audit fieldwork and testing next week, with a hopeful completion date of the fieldwork by the end of the year and an issuance of a report shortly thereafter. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to respond.
Any questions or discussion? We have a motion by Nordstrom to acknowledge and a second by Lewis. We'll go to Charity. Charity?
I'd like to make an amendment to that motion, if I may, to not only acknowledge, but to also add a permanent update item, the second council meeting of each month, specifically for Compass. Thank you.
And that would be at legal and finance, or on council? Come directly to council?
It'd be the second council meeting of each month, yes.
And it would not come to committee first?
Correct.
Okay. Everyone understands that amendment? Okay, we have, we have a motion. Was that a friendly amendment? Okay? All right, the motion maker accepts that. We won't, we won't go through the process of voting on the amendment. Everyone understands the amended motion? We'll go to Ron Sasso.
Just wanting to confirm, that's okay with, with staff and?
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay, thank you.
The, the reason for this was a very good one. Might as well make a clarification with this now. We've wanted to give this report, it's been almost a month, and we've had some difficulty trying to get it on the agenda. And it would be so much more helpful to the committee that as these issues come up, both with the committee reports and to anything else that comes up to the committee, that we could have the ability to come directly to council for either clarification or notification. I think it would streamline the process a little bit.
And we'll go to Jerry Wright. Jerry?
Curious why was it difficult to get it on the agenda? Was there?
I think Kellen probably answered that a little bit better than I did.
I wouldn't say difficult, just we had a, a delay in trying to figure out between the attorney's office and, and us how we would want to approach this, and, and we don't have a separate item or section on the agenda for items from the Compass Committee, so this would give us the ability to simply let the attorney's office know that we have agenda items for that particular council meeting.
Okay.
Jerry, I'll add to that. Basically, our problem is, we're doing work here that there are no procedures for. That we're, we're, this is like a going along. We're, we're almost making it up as we go along. And this type of addition would greatly, greatly streamline the process, because we, we're working for you. And that's who we should be reporting to on a regular basis.
Anything else?
I, I guess, that's good, and I would offer, as a member of the council, if there's an issue, you need to talk to us about it. Anytime's a good time. Okay?
Appreciate it.
And I'll go to John Roberts. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joel just walked out of the room. Hey, Joel, you want to come back?
You tried to escape.
Just a question. Since this is a committee of the council, is there a problem with them bringing it directly to the council and not through legal finance?
A concern was raised by the finance office that the items on the agenda are set in the council policies and procedures book, which has been adopted by the council, and since there was no provision in there for items from this committee, that that would need to be amended. So we would bring forward an amendment. I absolutely believe that they should come directly here. I don't know that it matters if they go to legal and finance or that it would hurt anything, but at the same time, then you do have a situation where they're making two reports, and the legal and finance committee is a recommending body to this body. Well, the Compass Committee is already a recommending body to this body, so it does seem somewhat redundant to have it go to legal and finance first. But just to be technically proper, it needs to, we need to amend the council policies and procedures to add an item from council. And I would advocate maybe looking at whether or not we should have the specific agenda items in the policies and procedures handbook, and perhaps just go to something less formal so we could more easily alter that agenda when we need to.
So that will be something you'll be working on, what we are working on right now?
Yes. Might even be on the next agenda, but in the future, they should be able to make reports directly to council.
Thank you very much, Joel. That's, you answered my question, and I think he answered yours, too. One other item that I want to bring up, because I know when Steve brought this to the legal finance committee, he was kind of looking at where we're going as far as work session meetings. And today, in the Compass Committee, and I haven't had a chance to talk to anybody, so you could enlighten, enlighten us to what we discussed there and what the motion was and what was voted on, if you would. Peter?
You're referring to the, the last item on our agenda today, which was the, we had a little discussion about the differences between a work session and a public meeting, and the pros and cons of each. And as it came up, it was kind of an evolving item on the Compass agenda, because several of the items before, it was, we kind of got distracted because it did go to the last item, that it ended up being an issue of how we as a committee have to handle certain issues that will be coming to us. And it became very evident today that one of the issues we have is what we is, have to give you is a report in January, which is the request for the 2013 agenda for, for ourselves, for our investigators, investigations, excuse me. And Kellen can bring you up a little more to date about how many potential ideas and issues that he himself has been investigating through his risk assessment, as well as through the communication with all the questionnaires that he got from you all on the council and from other department heads, as well as from the public. And we, today, I happened to bring one up myself, that, talking to various people in the public, and I raised an issue by raising it at the committee meeting, is I went through this whole process of trying to determine if by even raising the issue without detail, whether or not it would create controversy. And that's what is leading to this idea that we've asked for, we've done in the past, where we can have what we call work sessions, but as a conversation earlier in the day that I had with Richie Nordstrom, maybe we should stop calling them work sessions and calling them investigative sessions. It might be even better. Because that's really what we're doing. We're not doing any work. All we're doing is passing the ideas and discussing. We're very aware of some of the verbiage that we have to use on the committee, in the public, when we're trying to develop these ideas, can actually be harmful. As it was pointed out in the earlier discussion today, it works both ways. We could either omit something in our discussion and We could either omit something in our discussion, and then when we actually develop...or Callan develops the auditing plan, he could be sticking an item in there that completely changes the whole concept of what we talked about publicly until it goes to you as the council for approval that that's what we want to investigate. It could also work the other way. We could be discussing something openly in public that we decide that we don't want to do, and this itself can cause controversy. So it is becoming very aware that we have to have some mechanism somewhere that we, as a committee, before we can openly discuss certain items in public, because everything eventually will be. We need an ability to work with the auditor as a committee and work through these ideas, then bring them out into public so that we are not misquoting, misstating, or somehow having a public misinterpret what we're attempting to do. Worst thing I can think of is we say we're going to do something, and then all of a sudden, we don't. That's basically what it transpired. We're facing a deadline. We only have one more public meeting prior to the end of the year. By ordinance, we have to give you our recommendations for the 2013 audit plan in January. All right? Now, we only discussed in somewhat detail two possibilities, specific possibilities today. Callan has another list that he hasn't even discussed with us yet. We could not, in good conscience, just leave this all for our one public meeting that we have scheduled without somehow going through this list, saying which ones are viable, which ones we think are viable, which ones we can put off, which ones we want to recommend, and maybe which ones we don't. So we need some kind of a mechanism here. That's what we've been using our work sessions for, that we can be able to just sit down as a committee, come up with this agenda, if you want to call it that, our agenda of what we are going to speak about, without outside interference. That's basically what transpired today.
I believe also we voted to hold a work session next month.
That's correct.
Correct. I think that it's about time that this is put to bed. I think it's time that I'm going to bring this forward on the next council meeting so we can get a vote on this up or down. It's just time to put it to bed. So I just wanted to give council warning that it's coming back on the next council meeting. And one way or another, we're going to get rid of this and go from there.
John, I totally agree with you.
Because I honestly believe, Pete, I honestly believe that it was great that we had a vote on it in the Compass meeting today, but this is a council committee, and the council should vote on it. So we should vote on this, get it taken care of, get it done, and get on with it. But it is causing problems, and we need to take care of it. So one way or another, it needs to be voted on. We need to take care of it. Thank you very much.
John, I couldn't agree with you more. Okay? And that's what we have been asking for, one way or another. We will work, and we've always said from day one, we want to work within the rules. If the rule says we can't have them, great. As the rules were explained to us implying now, they say we can. All right? The problem is this constant, as you've pointed out, this constant discussion or back and forth about what we can do and what we can't do. Or we've had this meeting or that meeting, or what has transpired, or whatever. We all want this to go to bed. All we want to do is do our jobs.
Thank you. And we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the credit, Peter. I don't know if it's deserved or not. The reason I'm suggesting a workplace investigation is something we've used as a model before in my limited experiences, basically comparable to what we have in HR. Human Resources does investigations, Risk Management does investigations. And rather than calling it a work session, that's why I advocated the idea of coming up with an workplace investigation. And that'll give you some, in my opinion, some latitude about what you can do behind the scenes that needs to be done behind the scenes, but still, there needs to be some oversight so there doesn't get into the area or start taking liberties. And I trust you folks that are currently on the current Compass Committee, but we also have to think down the road in the future, those people that are taking over responsibilities. So that's the reason why I'm suggesting a workplace investigation. I'll yield the floor.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought it appropriate for me to speak on this since I brought this up. John brought it up again, but it's definitely something that has still bothered me from the very beginning because the council hasn't weighed in on this, and I think it's something we need to do because this group, this committee, which I think is extremely valuable, reports to the council. And now we're seeing what we're running into. So because if you're having to come to us to report, what can you report? What can't you report? What words do you need to say? And so it makes it difficult for you to execute your plans when you have no idea how to communicate to the group that you're supposed to report to, which is fantastical when you think about it. But I'm very concerned about...obviously, I would prefer to see all of these meetings open, just like Sioux Falls Audit Program, but that's something we will weigh in on. And I just wanted to ask one question because when you were making your comments, Peter, I remember part of the conversation was that council would be invited to these working sessions. And the fear that I have is this contradiction about wanting to close them, and then at the same time, we might have a quorum of city council at a working session or investigative working session, and then wouldn't there be some legal requirement for an open meeting? And so I'm very concerned about all of that. I mean, obviously, we need to weigh all of that, which is why I'm speaking about it now so we all can think about that before this comes back, as Alderman and Roberts spoke about. But I'd like to see it open. Thank you.
If I may, Steve, you're absolutely right. Okay? We've always said, any council person can come in and sit in what we call the work sessions. Even the public, if they wanted to, could sit in there. However, we have always maintained there would be some items of discussion in those work sessions that we did not want to discuss in public. We've only been trying to work around this and saying, how can we do this? How can we function? Now, you brought up Sioux Falls, okay? Have to be careful with that one because what they can legally tell you they do and what do they do is two different things. And I'll stick my neck out right now, and I know Charity probably won't like it, but I'm going to say it anyway. For the last month and a half, we followed the same lead that Sioux Falls has done. We've worked around the requirement. From day one, we've said we will do anything necessary to do the functions that we have to do. We worked around it by not having any sessions at all, but what we were doing was talking to one another on almost a one-to-one basis. Many of the decisions, unfortunately, defaulted to myself being the chair, which is something that we didn't want to happen. Because in technicalities, the entire agenda that Compass has by the ordinance can be set between the chair and the auditor. The rest of the committee really isn't needed per the ordinance to set the agenda. We've preferred not to do it that way. We've preferred to have the entire committee's input. And rather than trying to communicate these issues that we don't want to come into the public venue too soon, that's why we've been operating the way we have. But we've always had that intention, and anybody is welcome at these meetings. So I think we're all on the same page. I think we're just using some different words. All our intentions probably are the same. We just need to work through it. You've all said it before here. This is new ground. This has not been done before. All the rules are not in place. We aren't an executive committee. We're a legislative committee. So certain rules don't apply. Other rules do. We've got to look at the process that we hopefully can get done next council meeting by getting on a permanent item on the agenda so that if we can bring these things...this is what we have to do. This is...we're all struggling. Nobody wants this to fail. We don't want this to fail at all. We've got some really good potential audit topics coming up. And as John and Charity, we were listening today, some of this is pretty in-depth. We're going to have some issues coming up with the correct ones and maintaining a balance of what can we actually accomplish. Because that is partially up to us to communicate to the council. We've only got two auditors. We've only got so much staff. We've only got so much time. And there's a lot that we could be doing. And these issues that we keep getting bogged down in because we have disagreements, whether you want to call them verbiage, what have you, are all our intentions are really all one and the same. We just want to do our jobs, and we want to protect the public or government people, anybody that comes to us. It's a two-sided coin. The openness is a good issue. You're right. Everything should be as open as possible, and we've tried...we are trying to do that. But at the same time, there are going to be issues that come up that we have to be very careful about in terms of you've got to balance out a person's privacy or protection, say a whistleblower, versus the idea that everything has to be out in public. That's what we've all been facing here. We're all willing to do that. If it takes clarification, going to the state's attorney to get some determinations of where we fall into the law, that we do. We should do it. Let's look at it and decide this is what we need to go for.
Thank you. We do have a couple more. Steve, you still have the floor. Do you have anything else? We do have a couple of more council lights. And what I would like to do, if the council's okay with this, is I would like to proceed with the motion to acknowledge the report and to ask the city attorney to add a second council or an update for Compass at the second council meeting of each month. And then we'll come back to the additional speaker lights, unless they're both regarding the motion on the floor. Okay? Is everyone okay with that? Because they're...all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That motion's been disposed of, and now we'll go back to...we'll go to Ron Sasso.
A question for Joel. Don't know if anything has come out of the last open meetings commission reports, if anything has changed or any additional clarity regarding direction.
No, I'm not aware of any changes in state law since this was initially discussed, and I issued my opinion initially.
Thank you. Okay. And we'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, Pete, could I have just a little bit of clarity on what you just said about the last month and a half, working one-on-one? Just curious about what you meant about that. I'm guessing one of the things you probably were talking about could have been like the timeline, things like that?
Exactly. It didn't require...it was coming to the committee anyway, and it's never been released into public, other than the committee members, things like that.
I'm a committee member, and I wasn't invited to that dance, so I'm just curious...
Honestly, neither were a couple of others. We just decided to put it together and discuss it over tonight.
I'm just curious, Pete. So now you're having secret meetings to talk about the secret meetings?
No, no. Define a meeting.
I'm on the committee. I should be invited to this, Pete.
One at a time. John, you have the floor, and then if you have a question, Pete, you can add. Do you have any further motions? Did you want a motion to continue this? Are you bringing this up next?
I am.
Okay. Want to offer a motion to that effect, or do you just want to bring it up?
I'll bring it up.
Okay. Go to Bonnie Peterson.
I just wanted some clarification. I don't know if I need it from Mr. Roberts or from you. When he said that there was a meeting that he wasn't invited to, I thought when you said one-on-ones, you weren't meeting, you were just having one-on-one conversations, like maybe talking to Charity and maybe talking to John and maybe talking to Callan. Is that...or was there a secret meeting?
No secret meetings. It was talking one-on-one about agendas. The intent was to avoid a quorum so that if we...two people met, you all do it all the time. You do it discussing your items. We did the same thing.
Okay.
And with the intention, everything is brought up. There was talk between individuals. They were brought up at the meeting, the public meeting.
Okay. It kind of sounds a little bit like the workarounds we use for executive sessions since politically there was a lot of heat, people making issues about so much time in executive session because we do things where maybe we meet with the attorney, or maybe we go somewhere to read a document, or we get a confidential email. All this stuff is done kind of one-on-one to try to limit the amount of actual time that we have in executive session. So, okay, well, that's what I thought. I didn't think there was any secret meetings, but I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
We do not have a motion on the floor. We'll go to Jerry Wright.
I just want to say something I think I said a month or six weeks ago. I think that if we're going to have an element of our city government doing investigations, if that's the right word for it...I'm very familiar with IG, DCI, that kind of stuff because I've rounded some of that, did some of it. That we have to respect that and let them be. I guess if rules need to be straightened out, let's do it, but I think we need to accept the fact that if they're going to be doing some checking on things until we get the results, we're not going to know what's going on. And I think we need to clarify those rules because if we don't have that isolation or that protection, then we're going to, I would say, color or affect or impact due process, if that's the right way of saying it. So I think we need to be very cautious. And even those of us on the council, because we all think a little different, we need to kind of let them do their job. And I guess if they do it wrong, then we take hold of it. But I think that's where we need to put that trust there. I guess if there's issues we need to clarify, I hope we can do it soon. That's what I'm looking at them for, is to look at things and come back to us and say, this is what we found. And that's what you hope to do, correct? And I know from past experience, you can't do probably what you're trying to do with full disclosure, wide-open meetings. It just isn't going to happen. It's impossible. So let's work it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. And before we proceed, could we please have a motion to acknowledge the additional discussion or another motion?
I have a motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Wright and a second by Roberts. And now we'll go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind the committee that...or the committee, the council, that the process that we put the applicants for the Compass Committee through is well above and beyond what we do for any other committee. And the reason we did that is because we need the public, being the People's Accountability Program, to trust in the citizens at large that are stepping up to fulfill this job. To that end, they go through a character background check, they go through a criminal background check, and they go through a financial background check. We want to make sure that there is the utmost integrity behind that closed door. And one thing I keep hearing is that there's information that's going to be discussed that needs to remain confidential. There may be an element of that, but the thinking is very different on this because it's premature. If you've heard it said, I'll just repeat it again, that the information will be released when it is the right time. There are some time sensitivities with certain issues, and any finding, any report is going to be presented in a public forum. Everything is released at that point that is relevant to that finding, the procedure, the investigation, et cetera, that can be released, again, without compromising potentially someone's anonymity. You know, it's not all going to look that way, but it could. And so we're just trying to really cover all the bases as we embark upon this first full year's audit plan for 2013, making sure that we do have that flexibility to take whatever comes. And again, I just wanted to speak to the caliber of citizens that have stepped up to take this on. Not many people would want to go through the scrutiny that these many people would want to go through the scrutiny that these people have gone through and are continuing to go through in the public. And I commend you. Thank you.
Thank you, Charity. And we'll go to Ron Sasso. Ron?
Just additional clarification. When you mentioned about talking one-on-one and so forth, are you having any, any situations where you've got a two-on-one conversation about something that is important?
No.
Okay, just because then we're at a quorum and...
Basically, well, yeah. If it's three people, it's a quorum. And basically, go back to what was mentioned earlier about Sioux Falls. Like I said, you've got to be very careful about comparisons because they're basically doing the same thing that I just mentioned. That's how they have to work around. We don't want to do that. We'd like to have these discussions with the entire committee. But because of all this, I don't care what you call it, animosity, whatever, the difference of opinion as to how we should be conducting this, we're not getting it done.
I, I, and there again, I, I think, I think I'll, I'll probably just, I'm hoping I'm speaking for everybody. Everybody wants Compass to be successful because we all want it to work because the city benefits, the citizens benefit. I think it's just, it's a matter of also where, where those lines are. And I know we've had this discussion, we'll have it again, and we'll have it again. And at some point, we'll, we'll get this figured out. But I, I do believe it's an important aspect of figure, determining what we do with, with that and how we handle as far as the transparency. So, but I appreciate everything that everyone is doing on the committee. And, you know, look forward to getting those monthly reports. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? The motion is to acknowledge. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bids, Pauline.
First item up for bid was the Meadowbrook Maintenance Phase III Rebid Project. We received three bids on this, if you recall from the last meeting. Recommendation is to award the base bid, less alternate one, plus alternate two, to DDD Contractors LLC in the amount of eighty-three thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars.
Motion by Peterson, second by Laurenti. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Fifty-four.
Fifty-four is for the Memorial Park Irrigation Improvements. We received two bids on this project and the recommendation is to award to Rocking Tree Landscaping, Inc. in the amount of four hundred thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars and forty-five cents.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Roberts. And we'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
I have a question for Pauline. Pauline, did you check this morning at gender review? There was some discussion about this company. Did...
I, I apologize. I did not get a, a chance to visit with Cameron about that, no.
Okay, thank you.
I did. It's not the same company.
Okay, thank you.
What did Jerry write?
I've just, that's for the...
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now on items fifty-five through one thirty-six. Are there any of these items that need to be pulled for separate consideration? Do we have a motion to approve all of them per the recommendation?
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item one thirty-seven, Pauline.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone that because the school board is actually meeting in these chambers on the twenty-ninth of November, when you had originally scheduled the special meeting for, it has been rescheduled till Tuesday, the twenty-seventh of November at five-thirty.
We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Nordstrom to acknowledge. Any discussion? Bonnie Peterson?
Joel, has Mr. Colby notified of this change?
I believe so, but I'll confirm with him that, and his attorney, that he's aware of it.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we are now on public hearing items one thirty-eight through one forty-four. We have a motion to open public hearing. Motion by Lewis, second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have one speaker request form from Pat Mann, from Vice President of Student Affairs for the School of Mines.
Good evening. I'm Pat Mann, the Vice President for Student Affairs and Dean of Students at the School of Mines. It was just one year ago that we were here talking about the neighborhood around the School of Mines, and particularly the gas depot and the liquor license there, and the issues with the sale of hard liquor and the forties. And since that time, the gas depot has really been great neighbors. Their liquor license, the one was revoked and the other they didn't ask to renew. And we have had a big improvement in the one block adjacent to the campus. The old Blue Motel is down and there's new residential facility apartments on that facility now. And so we're just really appreciative of all the changes and all the cooperation with the city and, and the school and the gas depot and the Rapid City Police Department, everyone to make that change. On September twenty-fifth, Neil Carpenter from the Fresh Start Convenience Store Gas Depot came to say that they would be coming to request a license for beer and wanted to make sure that the school was aware of that and wondered what we thought about that. Really appreciate that they've been so open about that. And we talked about it. I went to the Student Association and asked our administration what everyone thought. And it, we understand why they're asking for that. It's for their revenue and their sales. But when we think about it, we just really feel it's about a year premature or so. We like what the changes of, that have happened, but we're just nervous that maybe it's still too soon. So I responded back to Neil that, at that time, that we certainly weren't going to go out and say that we supported it, but we weren't going to go advocate against it. And then the next week, there was a situation on the hill close to the campus where, again, a homeless camp. And then there was graffiti written in our western neighborhood. And so with that, then we did write a letter saying that from the student perspective and the administration, we do still feel strongly that this is still too early. And thus, the letter that I believe you have is an attachment. But I just want to reiterate again, the gas depot really has come forward as a good neighbor. If you drive down the street, you could see that there's been a lot of landscaping around their area and also in that triangle area that's between Saint Joe and Main Street. So a lot of great changes have occurred in the year. We're very appreciative of that. We still have a ways to go in a few blocks area around there. And we just feel like that bringing alcohol back to the area is a little premature. We do understand that they're not asking for the liquor license, so that's a, we're very pleased about that. It's more, might the forties come back in? And then what might the packaged alcohol do in that area? Are there any questions?
After the public hearing is over. Right now, we're still taking public comment, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on these items, one thirty-eight through one forty-four? Anyone else? Come forward and state your name for the record.
Chris Schwartz, representing Fresh Start Convenience Stores.
Ryan Kane, Fresh Start Convenience Stores.
And I just wanted to let everybody know Mark Schwartz was at the previous meeting and was who you spoke to. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to be here tonight. We've been trying really hard to work with everybody to clean up that area. The housing has changed. And like the school representative said, there's been a lot of landscaping. We've painted and they've done a bunch of things. And I, I think that area of town has actually changed. There's good residential. It's, it's cleaned up. And we're all making a joint effort, I would say, to make it a better place. Unfortunately, without having any alcohol in the store, it's taken our store from profitability to actually running a loss. And I'm not so much concerned that we lost the license in the area, or that there's alcohol or liquor in the area, but I have competitors less than a mile to the, I believe it's to the west, the Family Thrift and the MG Oil Store, and two blocks in the other direction where they're able to sell alcohol. And it's taken away our customer basis. And I'm not talking about the transients and the issues like that, but just regular old guys that are stopping after work and grabbing beer on the way home or anything like that. And really what I'm asking is just to be able to bring beer back into the store. And I don't want to sell singles, forties, as they're commonly known as. I have no intention to try to get liquor back into the store ever. And I just want to be able to compete on a level playing field with the rest of the competitors in the area. And that's all I'm asking. And if you would like some sort of stipulation in the license for us to not have singles, I would be open to that. Thank you. If you have any questions?
Ryan, would you like to speak?
No. No, that's fine. He covered it.
Do we have any additional speaker request forms on item, item thirty-eight through four, one, one thirty-eight through one forty-four? Okay, the public hearing will remain open at this time. And we'll now go to, now we come to the place where we close the public hearing. Can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
A motion by Clayton, second by Nordstrom. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're on consent public hearing items one thirty-eight through one forty-three. My understanding is that like one thirty-eight, one thirty-nine, one forty, and one forty-three polled. Is that correct, Pauline? Okay. One thirty-eight, one thirty-nine, one forty, and one forty-three. Do we have the, a motion to approve the balance, which is one forty-one and two? Motion by Doyle, second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on one thirty-eight. And we'll go to Chad Lewis. Can you read this in the record for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item one thirty-eight is Late Harvest Incorporated Doing Business as Delmonico Grill, six oh nine Main Street, for an off-tail, off-sale retail wine license transfer from Delmonico Grill, Inc. to Doing Business as Delmonico Grill. And I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. We'll go to Pauline.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The state is actually going to correct the owner name from Late Harvest, Inc. to Trifecta Group, LLC. The, the owners themselves, who makes up those organizations, are the same, exactly the same. We checked at that. And basically, it's just because they have tallies and Delmonico and they want to keep them separate on a business level. So that applies to both one thirty-eight and one thirty-nine.
Okay. So your recommendation is to?
To go ahead and approve with the Trifecta Group, LLC.
I'll, I'll accept that recommendation if I'm motion.
That's okay with the seconder?
Second.
Okay.
Can I make a motion? Sorry.
Want to add one thirty-nine to that?
I was going to add one thirty-nine at the same time.
The motion now includes one thirty-eight and one thirty-nine. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One forty.
Item number one forty is Fresh Start Convenience Stores, Inc. Doing Business as Fresh Start Rapid City, five twenty Birch Avenue, for a package off-sale liquor malt beverage license. And I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. And before we go to the lights, Joel, if you could shed some light on this for us, do we have the, do we have the authority to do a conditional approval or to obtain an agreement that they won't sell the singles?
I don't want to go into great detail in my opinion, but I had looked at this based on a question from Chief Allender. And while there's no specific statutory authority, I believe that inherent in the city's ability to approve a license and for both the suitability of the location and the applicants, that it would be appropriate to put conditions on it. I won't go into detail, but I am aware that in the past, the city has put, I believe, conditions on license. I was able to find some case law from other states regarding conditions on licenses that made me feel comfortable with that. So if you wanted to place a condition that they cannot sell singles because that, essentially this location, it was not appropriate based on the history of the location and some other issues along the lines, it would really go to the location of the establishment, that, that the sale of these type of items isn't appropriate at this particular location, then you could place that stipulation on it. One of the other discussions we've had, and I believe Chief Allender has talked to the applicants, but our office hadn't had a chance to yet, was that another thing you could do is stipulate the approval on the condition they enter into an agreement regarding the sale of the, the singles and the forties. And I would have a higher comfort level with that, both on its enforceability and giving us some remedies if these owners or any future transferees of the license then were to violate that stipulation.
So clarify the stipulation that you're recommending be added tonight.
Well, if the council chooses to do so, I believe the police department would not oppose this license, but I would defer to the chief if there were a stipulation in place that did not allow the sale of single malt beverages or forties. And if the council was willing to put that stipulation in, that's pretty much what it would need to be, that just that they would not sell single. They would only sell packages like six packs, twelve packs, and things like that. But I would also ask that the council have a stipulation of approval, that they enter into an agreement memorializing that essentially, so that would contain enforcement provisions and, and an acknowledgement from them that this was appropriate.
Okay, thank you. What did Jerry write?
I'd like to know if the School of Mines is agreeable to those stipulations, or you prefer no liquor license. If you'd come to the microphone, Pat.
Given the timing, that it's only been one year, our preference would be no liquor. But the, those provisions would certainly be reassuring and that would be a big help.
Thank you.
Okay?
Bonnie Peterson?
I have a question for Chief Allender. Chief, there's some new people on council that weren't here. Could you do a brief synopsis, or a long one, on how, how things were before, you know, what kind of led us to this point, the problems that we're having there and why the council, you know, how we got to this situation, and what has changed since then? So that we can have better guidance from someone in the know.
Yes, I'll try to summarize that. In our city, we have spent many years trying to improve the conditions for the homeless people. The people that habitate, the, inhabit the same areas, the homeless people, the bike paths, bridges, all those kind of things. I'm summarizing about nine years' worth of work in thirty seconds here, but we have, we have tried every avenue possible. One of the, one of the things that we tried in about two thousand five or six was to ask centrally located liquor outlets to stop selling the malt liquor, forty-ounce malt liquor. Forty ounces of rot gut malt liquor that has about ten percent, ten to twelve percent alcohol. You can buy it for two dollars or under, or around two dollars. And that is typically the drink of choice among groups of homeless people that are bent on getting drunk. They will beg for change when they have a couple dollars or four dollars. They'll go get a bottle or two of this malt liquor. And soon afterwards, that, that's when the chaos starts. They'll be laying around in public places, walking into buildings that don't belong to them. In some cases, they were stumbling onto a School of Mines property. It is a very unfavorable situation. So then the word gets out that the forties are here. And then it's major, major movement to get down there to buy those forties. And it was even worse and more pronounced because the two of the major distributors stopped selling them at our request. So the issue that we had last year, and one of the reasons that I was on the front of this campaign to stop this license a year ago, was that this particular business had refused to stop selling them at our request. They weren't required to, but we asked for that. And... And in addition to that, there was some poor judgment or bad behavior on the part of Fresh Start where they had sold to drunk people, which is against the law. They had sold to some underage people and so on and so forth. So that just compounded the problem. And in the middle of the hearing a year ago, then they withdrew the request and so the argument was over. And they essentially gave up their license. But I remember thinking, and as long as I'm talking, I'll just tell you, my position on it is that last year, if they would have only agreed to stop selling forties, I wouldn't have had any other reason to object to their liquor license. They can face their consequences like any other retail beer distributor. They can deal with the Department of Revenue for selling to underage people. That whole system is already in place. The main issue was the forties. And I've talked to Ryan, who's here tonight, who's told me they're at a point where they're going to close the store or ask to get packages of beer back in for sale. And that they have scanning equipment to scan identification cards or driver's licenses and that there'll be a mandatory scanning policy. And they have no desire for forties and that he would be willing to enter into an agreement not to sell forties. So I, so having said all that, with all those things present, I have no reason to object to that license being approved with those stipulations. And I am very sensitive to the School of Mines' feelings on the issue. I can offer a little bit of reassurance, too, with the urban renewal that's taken place down there. It has been a very quick turnaround in the visual presentation of the whole neighborhood and the feel is different and many of the people are different. And we have our eye on that area as well. So, thank you.
Continue. Chief, I remember that at the time, students were like finding intoxicated people on their porch, their home porches, being approached as they're walking home late at night for money. Even some being so bold as to actually knock on the door and grab some lady's hand or something when she opened the door. Have these things stopped in that area since?
You may be better off addressing that to Pat Mann.
The issue of the drunk people in the neighborhood and the panhandling and that sort of thing has drastically reduced. It's just much different.
Okay, because I know one of my concerns or that was discussed at the time is that we have a lot of international students. And they were choosing not to come to tech because of the stories and the people that they have seen. I know, thank you, I know I'm very conflicted by this. And Joel, can I, Joel, a question? Joel, is there like any kind of provision to have like a trial period or anything like that, like for, say, six months or like not do the whole license for a year or?
No, once you issue the license, it's issued for a year and only the Department of Revenue can revoke it.
Okay, thank you.
There we go. I would like to make a friendly amendment, and I'm guessing this might be the best way to go, to amend the current approval to include stipulation that would not allow singles or forties and probably using the language that Joel so eloquently put forward to that amendment.
We have a friendly amendment, so are you okay with? You need to either accept it or, okay, then we need to move towards just accepting. What we need to do then is we need to have a motion and a second to amend, because otherwise we get off track.
Fine, we'll accept it.
Okay. Go ahead with your, go ahead.
Is that okay with you? You've indicated that you're okay with that? Is that okay?
Yes, I am. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, and now we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Just some observations on my part is that I've gone into other Fresh Start stores and compared it with this locale, and I'm a little concerned about the atmosphere that we have at this location. And I will come back and take another look at it and see what progress you've made in there. But the other area that I'm really concerned about is that, and I will support the motion, that no forties be allowed in there. And ancillary part of this is that glass bottles seems to be showing up throughout the city. And these forties are the predominant choice. That is starting to show up in all kinds of areas within the city. And then the glass is also broken and used as a weapon as well. And so I'm just not comfortable with forties, period. And so I can support the stipulations put on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Richie. And we'll go to Bill Clayton. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if I may kind of make a circle around the room, one of the things, Chief Allender, that I'm hearing from you is we've seen improvement based on the fact that we've not had beer whatsoever in this Fresh Start store, not to mention a facelift in that area. So it would just be the bottom line. We've seen improvement. And I guess all I need is a nod of the head so you don't have to make another speech. And then, gentlemen from Fresh Start, one of the things that I heard the chief say is that you've got procedures and equipment and whatnot in place to do things differently, properly, and smart, if you will. And maybe just as a dad, you know, it's kind of like, well, did you learn your lesson? And I, you know, I'm hearing the right things and I don't think you need to come up, unless you want to. I mean, I'm not trying to quiet you down. If you've got something to say, by all means.
Yes, sir, I just wanted, whoa. Sorry. I just wanted to kind of speak to those because they are very important to us. And it's something that, you know, as people who are running a business, I mean, we've seen the results of what can happen if minors are sold to or drunks are sold to. And I have since actually gone up to peer and gone through the TAM training course and am a certified TAM instructor. Everybody at the location is already TAM certified. We do have the scanners on our register that any time a alcohol or tobacco item is purchased, you have to enter a birth date. And so a cashier cannot voluntarily bypass the entry of a birth date. And if they, unfortunately, if they do, it's due to their own negligence and disregard for the rule that we have put in place. And we've gone so far, I mean, even we were trying to salvage it last year, in that we made every employee sign a policy stating it is our policy that if you are, if anybody is purchasing tobacco or alcohol, you have to card them. And so we are very adamant about not selling to minors, about not selling to drunks. And we have absolutely done everything we can to help improve the area around the school and definitely agree that it's taken a drastic step forward, which is why we are so on board with not selling singles, as we do understand the impact that they have and unfortunate clientele that typically gravitates towards them. So yes, we have learned our lesson and yes, we have a lot of policies and procedures in place. And I and my manager call every week stressing to my managers that before they leave the store, every day, they're going to stress their staff that they card. So it is very important to us as a company.
And it looks like you've done the right things to get things in place as a precursor rather than being reactive.
Yes, sir.
So I appreciate that and certainly applaud that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Pat, if you don't mind, and you've been running your feet off from the back of the room, but if you don't mind coming up just one more time, please. And I guess I would suggest if anybody else has comments and needs her here, perhaps we can keep her up and save her some footsteps. Thanks, I appreciate that. One of your comments was you feel that this may in fact be premature. So we've been a year without a liquor license there and we've seen notable changes in all sorts of areas. But when you say this may be premature, could you tell me, and I'm not trying to be sarcastic at all, but kind of a crystal ball look, what would you anticipate changing farther if for some reason we were to force these gentlemen and their store to wait another year? What would happen in that ensuing year?
Well, we still have, we still need to do more cleanup in the blocks adjacent to the campus, so we're working on that. And the biggest thing about the premature comment is we just don't want to see any backslide. And by not having the forties, I think that that's huge in prevention of that. And then it's just, it's been really nice this past year. And so having alcohol back that close in the area, is that going to make a negative difference? But the forties is huge in this conversation.
So I hear some well-deserved nervousness, but I think you would agree that we've got some real preventative measures in place that these folks are trying hard.
There's been definite changes and I know that there's a real desire that there's not backslide. It's just a little caution and trepidation with that.
Great, thanks so much. I'll leave the floor, Mr. Mayor.
Chad?
Call the question.
Any objections to calling the question? It does. Is that correct? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Here.
Motion carries with one no from Jerry Wright. And we'll go to item number 143.
Item number 143 is Resolution 2012-112B, levying assessment for cleanup of miscellaneous property. And I move approval and yield the floor to Pauline Assumption.
Pauline.
If I get a second?
Go ahead, Pauline.
I'm not sure who to thank for that, but thank you. On this item, we need to remove item number four as that property owner paid their bill in full on Friday. So if you could amend your motion to approve with the exception of number four.
I will do that.
That's okay with the seconder?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with removal of number four on the list. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 144, and before we proceed on this, I understand we have an error in the title. Brad, it's 5861.
Yeah, there's a minor correction we'd like to make on the ordinance number. It's numbered 5867. We need it to be 5868.
And Joel, we can approve this tonight with, Joel's not here, I think we can. So somebody could read this and, Chad, could you read this agenda for us?
Item number 144 is a second reading of ordinance 5868, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Roberts for approval of item 144. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Pauline, bill list.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The bill list is that which is before you. There are no additions. Total bills are $5,912,621.06.
Motion by Lewis, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We have a motion by Clayton and a second by Peterson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we are adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.